Good evening. So I'll call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thomas, roll call, please.
Mr. Payne.
Present.
Mr. Snook.
Present.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Ms. McGill.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
The pair is their motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
For a second?
A second.
All right, please vote. All right, agenda for March 2nd is approved. Are there any announcements? No announcements? All right.
You can vote tomorrow.
Yeah, don't forget to vote.
Anybody can vote in the primary?
Yes, please vote. All right, next we have recognitions and proclamation. We have one proclamation.
I believe we have one. It's the proclamation for a census day as April 1st, 2020. Whereas Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution mandate mandates a decennial census stating, "Representatives and direct taxes shall be apportioned among the several states according to their respective numbers." And whereas the 2020 census will address every household in the nation with a simple questionnaire with the goal of counting everyone once, only once, in the right place. And whereas every household in Charlottesville, Virginia is required by the Constitution to complete their census form and count everyone living with them on April 1st, 2020 by responding online, by phone, or with a paper questionnaire. And whereas the data collected from the survey is used to determine a variety of things, including but not limited to the distribution of congressional seats in the United States House of Representatives, how to read district states, and how to allocate federal funds to states, which directly impacts communities. And whereas additionally, residents, businesses, local governments, real estate developers, and city planners use the data collected in a variety of ways to support community initiatives, build factories and offices, plan new schools and hospitals, and develop new homes, and revitalize old neighborhoods. And whereas data obtained by the survey will be used to help determine how approximately $675 billion will be distributed from the federal government to state, local, and tribal governments annually. And whereas up to $2,000 of federal funding will be lost for each person not counted, as well as upwards of $20,000 of federal funding lost every 10 years. And whereas this is important that everyone in Virginia counts, every community matters, and that every person who lives in Virginia has equitable access to opportunities, resources, and representation. Now therefore, Mayor Nakia Walker and the Charlotteville City Council do hereby recognize April 1st, 2020, as Census Day in the city of Charlottesville, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Signed and sealed the 2nd day of March, 2020, by Mayor Nakia Walker.
Mayor Walker, could I add one thing about that? It's very important that everybody get counted because it's been estimated that it will cost the city $2,000 roughly in grant money not received for every person who isn't counted. Please be counted.
Can I just make a brief comment? I work with the Census Bureau.
Oh, please come forward. Do you want to give us to her?
So there's a report in general.
There's another woman who was going to bring a slide thing, but...
That's for...
That's for later.
Okay, so I'll just do my little thing. It'll take one minute. So we're looking for to recruit thousands and thousands of people to work this summer from May to July. They pay $22 an hour. You're paid weekly. You're paid for training, transportation, mileage.
Could you speak into the mic so that...
I'm sorry. I thought my voice was loud enough. Okay, and so if you were interested in applying, I can give you that information. And it would be best to apply right now since they're hiring as we speak. And you would be trained in late April or early May. And as I said, work through July at least. So, does anyone have any questions?
No questions.
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay. Okay, so I'm here with the Census Bureau. We're looking to hire thousands and thousands of people in every nook and cranny of the country to be census takers. That would mean you would go door to door and ask people who don't respond to the questionnaire, the information on it. It's nine questions, and it's, it does not ask about immigration, social security, or household income. And so you, as I, I forgot where I veered off, but it's hiring now, the work is from May to July. They pay $22 an hour, pay training, mileage, and you get paid, you get paid...
No, you can just keep talking.
Okay, and you get paid every week.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone is interested, I can quickly walk through and give information. If you just raise your hand.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Thomas, will you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent Agenda A, minutes, February 3rd, special and regular meetings. February 6th, budget work session. February 11th, special meeting. February 12th, meeting with cadre. February 18th, special and regular meetings. February 20th, work session. B, appropriation, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, fiscal year 2019, $25,072, second reading. C, appropriation, Byrne JAG Youth Engagement Programs Grant, $99,291, second reading. D, appropriation, skate park lighting donations, $47,540, first of two readings. E, appropriation, transfer from the Historic Resources Committee funds to the examination of possible burials near the Gilmer, Craven, Houghtop Cemetery at Penn Park, $3,500, first of two readings. F, resolution, playground license for Walker Upper Elementary School, one reading. G, resolution, referral of accessory dwelling unit, middle-density zoning, and affordable dwelling unit zoning text amendments to the Planning Commission, one reading. H, ordinance, proposed amendment to City Code Section 15-435B, vehicle immobilization rates, second reading.
Thank you. If there's anyone from the public who wish to speak, you can come up. I will tell you that we're about to have a motion to remove G to discuss at the end of the meeting tonight. And that's the ADU, middle-density zoning, affordable dwelling unit text amendment. So that will be discussed by council at the end of the meeting tonight. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak? Well, once we vote on it, but that's coming up. Anyone who wish to speak on an item on consent? Okay. Fair motion.
I move to remove Resolution G, the referral of accessory dwelling unit, middle-density zoning, and affordable dwelling unit zoning text amendments to Planning Commission, to be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Second.
Okay. Please vote. Oh, I, wrong vote. That's fine, but I would've said no. Accomplished the same thing. All right, is there a motion for the other items?
Yes, I move to adopt the consent agenda without item G.
Second.
All right, any further questions or comments? All right, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero. Next, we'll have the City Manager response to Community Matters from the February 18th meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of City Council. To the public, there were two items I want to bring up tonight for discussion. And one pertains to an incident that happened on the downtown mall on December 28th, 2018. The question was what happened to the individual, the suspect of that crime. That individual actually pled guilty to the crime and was sentenced, and will be sentenced in the very near future. The next item is pertaining to the gentleman who came and said that he knows a person that would be interested in purchasing his statues. But at this time, I think that we should wait and see what the state adopts. And then at that time, we can explore those options as well as others. I think it's important that we do wait to see what the state does in terms of the adoption of their legislation. That's all I have for tonight.
Are you continuing to look into the drainage issue in the cemetery?
Yes, that's what we, we're looking at that. And we'll come back with more information pertaining to that. As I mentioned last meeting, it was, you know, we would have to actually go out and look at the cause of that and then be able to really give you a concrete plan of what our options are. We don't have that this time.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Community Matters. And first up, we have Jeanette Kawachi.
I'm going to cede my time to Emily Dreifus.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Emily Dreifus, and I'm an organizer with the Legal Aid Justice Center at 1,000 Preston Avenue. I'm also on the FAR Advisory Council. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. And I have several items I want to speak about, and other people will talk more in depth. But first, I wanted to start with the good news, which is that FAR is having a benefit concert, or will benefit from a concert that is being sponsored by the Almar High School Jazz Ensemble, March 15th, at 7:00 PM at the Jefferson Theater. And we hope people will join us for that. It should be a really great evening. You can get tickets on the Jefferson Theater's website. And as far as the issues go, I wanted to speak to several items. One is, as you move forward on the budget, both rent and tax relief programs can be bolstered significantly to address the displacement that's happening in our community. And we really urge you to dig into that issue this year. And we would be happy to work with you to provide some specific recommendations on those programs and how they could be more user-friendly. If you have a look at the rent relief description on the website, it is incredibly hard to understand. So if someone is wondering if they're eligible, it would be a very difficult thing to determine that from the language on the website. And I think the more we can do to spread the word about those programs and ensure that lower-income folks are getting the server, the benefits that they are able to access, the better off we will be as a community. The Housing Advisory Committee is another issue that's important as far as equity in our community and the displacement happening. Even though there are certainly some things that could be done to improve the process, including the funding, distribution, allocation process, that body has provided much-needed technical expertise about what can be done to address housing problems and to stem the tide of displacement and encourage affordable housing construction. Along those lines, I wanted to bring up a concern I have about the Steering Committee for the Comp Plan, Affordable Housing Strategy, and Zoning Overhaul. The Steering Committee that met one time so far and has another meeting scheduled later this month was very undiverse. There were no low-income black people in the room at all. And given that those are the folks that are most dramatically impacted by the affordable housing crisis, that's something that really must be remedied. So I'd like to ask if council could take action to direct staff or however you can take this in hand and be able to make some changes so that people are well-represented. Thank you.
Who is on that committee? Whoever's...
Who's not?
Oh, okay.
I can't remember the names, but there is an email that has a list of everyone who's on it. I can forward it to you.
And who's representing the groups that you're associated with?
On that committee?
Yes.
I am. Brandon Collins is representing FAR, and Erin Winston is a member of CLIC. Oh, sorry, Annie Stok, Erin was an alternate when Annie had to be out for the first meeting, but...
So the three of you are representing those three organizations?
Two people are representing CLIC, one person was added to represent FAR. But it doesn't seem like community members are there in any significant way. And when the first meeting was held, we asked about encouraging more people to come, and they seemed very open to it, the consultants did. And I said, would there be an incentive? And they seemed positive about that. And then what I was told recently was that it would be one seat for a representative from the low-income black community. Which doesn't seem, to me, this ought to be 60% at least, low-income black folks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeffrey Jaeger.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Jaeger. I'm a patrol and field training officer and forensic technician for the Charlottesville Police Department's evening shift. I'm here tonight to bring to your attention a topic that has been mentioned several times in this chamber, but apparently with not a lot of attention. All of our officers are here tonight on their time off to advocate for basic improvements that you can help us make to bring our department up to the standards of a world-class city. The police department currently occupies a small portion of this building, which has undergone little to no renovation since its construction in the 1960s. We are forced to spend thousands of the taxpayers' dollars a year to lease enough additional office space to carry out our basic functions. We often run essential computer systems necessary for timely and accurate information sharing across the nation on generator power. Last year, we were forced to evacuate the lower floor, an area that our patrol supervisors and officers had worked in 24 hours a day due to levels of black mold and lead dust that had grown toxic and rendered that area unfit for human habitation. We still have to use some necessary facilities in that area at risk to our own health. The two small showers provided for our officers are a breeding ground for mold and often flood our bathroom and locker room due to poor installation. For years, officers have reported respiratory problems from doing nothing more than office work in this building. We brought up the idea of a new facility, or at least a substantial renovation, in the past. For years, those suggestions have been pushed down the road either to be studied or simply brushed aside altogether. But little renovation has occurred, is often funded by the gracious volunteers and donors of the Charlottesville Police Foundation. This facility, in other words, is quite literally a charity case. Our employees want what any other hard-working American does, a safe workplace and a workplace that we can take pride in every day. More than that, this is a place where we have to bring crime victims to on the worst days of their lives. These people deserve our very best, and first impressions leave lasting impressions. They deserve the impression of confidence that we can deliver the most up-to-date technology and resources to bring their victimizers to justice. The money is there, the question is one of priorities. Our esteemed public safety partner, the Fire Department, has been allocated tens of millions of dollars in recent years with which they have produced truly world-class facilities. We are both in professions of selfless service, one team dedicated to the preservation of our citizens' property and of their very lives. We're here tonight reminding you that although our uniforms and functions are very different, we are still one team, putting our lives on the line for you and your families every single night and every day. We simply ask that we be treated like an equal member of that team. Please prioritize capital improvements projects for the police department. You have an amazingly dedicated group of men and women here. Everyone sitting in this room either stayed through the mass exodus or volunteered to serve this community after its darkest hour, knowing the challenges it might bring. Give them the dignity of working in a facility worthy of that dedication.
Thank you. Um, what's the, I thought the downstairs area was getting, being repaired.
Yeah, we're doing a little work, but as, you know, as mentioned, I mean, it's an old, it's an old building. They do need some major modifications to their particular area, so...
And what was that in it?
What was that what?
What was, so what's...
Unapproved.
And what was being done in terms of the, because they said they were still using some spaces?
Yeah, they're still using some spaces. What we're, we've come to do is turn to do some, like I said, remedy some of the issues that are there. But like I said, I mean, they can't really house there. And we have different locations that were rented across the city for them to be able to do their office work.
So as part of the CIP discussion, we'll be able to see what was requested and what was not funded at this time to make some decisions if we needed to...
Yeah, and I would have to have Paul to come in and talk about those specifics in terms of what's going to be funded.
Yeah, I'm asking for it right now, but yeah.
Going to be funded.
Yeah, those images are powerful.
But do they already know what's being approved and what's not?
Those discussions were had with the chief in terms of what's going to be done and what's not going to be done. But as I mentioned before, as I brought to the council in terms of, you know, the different things that we need in this building as a whole, not just the police department, but as a whole, the different things that are needed. But, you know, like I said, where they're being housed, they really need some, you know, some heavy renovations.
Thank you.
I'm Elaine Poehm.
My name is Elaine Poehm, I'm with the Legal Aid Justice Center, and we are a member of the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. Good evening, Mayor Walker, Vice Mayor McGill, and the City Councilors. Before I begin, I want to raise up the community equity requests of the budget, including the People's Coalition request for fully funding the PCRB, FAR's request for the community internship program, and properly funding the affordable housing efforts, including tax and rent relief, fully funding the CAF, and fully funding CRHA and FY22. But I'm here mainly to address the housing proposal, and thank you for removing that from the consent agenda. We, and we want to start by commending Ms. Robertson, Mr. Sales, and Mr. Haluska for acting swiftly and proactively to address this affordable housing crisis. We're excited about many pieces of this proposal, and we appreciate the hard work. However, I am here speaking today to encourage council to lift up the Housing Advisory Council. I know that there is some confusion perhaps, I just talked with Mr. Sales, about whether this is going to be a separate body. That's not how I read the ordinance, based on how I read the ordinance. It would be an elimination of the existing body and reconstituting it with different members. Just to give some highlights about how important the HAC has been to this city in the past several years. It's one of the most important public bodies in the city of Charlottesville for positive change. It has given us the Housing Voucher Program. They are not only the creators of that program, but they brokered that program, they wrote that program, and they administer, they helped engage in administering that program. It has used its expertise to amend the landlord risk reduction so that it no longer ruins a tenant's credit and runs off of stereotypes. Based on the housing needs assessment, the HAC created an intervention assessment tool for the city to help project costs to meet the affordable housing need. It helped advise the city on their legislative priorities this year. It helped create an incentive program for landlords who rent affordable housing by providing leap energy efficiency upgrades. And it helped create an historic RFP for a comprehensive plan rewrite that actually focuses on equity and redress. Most importantly, it is a public body with public meetings, where people can come and hear about what's happening in affordable housing in our city. This proposal proposes to remove all of the power of the HAC to advise the council directly. It concentrates all of the power to promulgate, enact, and enforce legislation into one person who does not have a staff at this time. And it will completely change the makeup of the commission. And there's no requirement in that list of members that they have to have any sort of proven track record in affordable housing. So I encourage you to move forward with the incentives zoning ordinances, but do not move forward with the HAC elimination. Thank you.
I'm Cordell Fortune.
Cordell Fortune, 825 Red Street. I'm a local business owner, 2017. You know, I created Shemango Body Brothers &amp; More. And through that, we were able to do local vendor shows in Charlottesville and surrounding areas. And we had very, we had very good success, everything was good. But one thing that bothered me, there wasn't, people there that looked like me. There wasn't an African-American presence in these events. And so with that problem, and the help of the African-American Heritage Center, I created the Fortune Shop African-American Vendors Market. And through that platform, we want to give African-American vendors in Charlottesville and surrounding areas a place and to promote their businesses, to sell their products, and show their creativeness. So we did our first one through a grant, September 28th, at the Jefferson School. And through that success, and with the generosity of Centurion Martha Jefferson Hospital, we will, they will help promote a Fortune Shop pop-up one Saturday a month for the rest of the year. And the first one would be March 7th, Saturday, at the Carbon Rec Center from 12:00 to 4:00 PM. So there will be over 30 vendors, African-American vendors, selling all kinds of products from jewelry to cosmetics, to food. So trying to get everybody to come out, support black business. The first 38 people that arrive will receive a gift from the Fortune Shop and the vendors. So once again, March 7th, the Saturday, March 7th, at the Carbon Recreational Center from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Guys come out and help and support us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And have you connected with Holly Lee in Economic Development?
I know Holly, but I haven't connected with her about working with the Fortune Shop there.
Well, maybe that would be something that you could check out and see if it could assist in any way. All right, thank you. Garrett Trent.
My name is Garrett Trent. I'm giving my time to Joy Johnson.
Good evening, my, my name is Joy Johnson. I reside at 802 Hay Hardy Drive. And I am trying to find, I had to take notes, so I come up here and I forget. The Housing Advisory Committee was created in order to provide policy guidance to the City Council on one of the most critically important challenges facing our community, the lack of affordable housing for the people who are being priced out and gentrified out of our community. We have advisory boards for tree planting, parking, towing, historic resources, you name it. Not to say these aren't important issue, but it would be a real shame to disband our advisory board for the affordable housing while retaining one of the trees and cars, the ones for trees and cars. Housing is a huge problem, and the city needs the HAC to keep doing its job of developing innovative solutions for our housing crisis. I know that the city staff don't always appreciate having citizens involved in developing policy, but we have many experts in the housing policy in our community, and including residents like myself, who have firsthand experience to housing issues. And the HAC provides a positive forum for these citizens to get engaged and lend their ideas and expertise to addressing the major challenge, community challenges. So I, I put that in writing because I always lose thought when I come up here and start looking at all of you all. But one of the things that I would like to say is that if it wasn't for working with HAC and understanding all of the nuance that goes into providing, providing affordable housing and stuff like that, the 12 women at South First Street would not have been able to design their own community this summer. And it's because of that, and them actually seeing, and we actually, I'm using the fact that low-income resident voices are never in the room. And this was one way for us to be able to bring some of those voices in the room. HAC was able to help to do that. So just saying, right now, I talked, spoke to John a little bit earlier. I'm a consensus person. I just feel like we need to come together, talk about it, figure out what it is that needs to be changed, change it. But I just thinking, disbanding the HAC Advisory Committee right now... But I just think in disbanding the, the HAC Advisory Committee right now as it is, is not essential.
Thank you. And I just want to comment since there are more people on here that are gonna speak about it. But there was already comments made about, you know, the proposal that came out of HAC and there was already a change that we received to decrease membership, but still have a policy board in place. With it going to the Planning Commission, the public would have time to comment there, submit any proposals as normal. And you would also have an opportunity for that public hearing and when it came back before council. So this wasn't, wasn't the end. We don't even know what the Planning Commission is going to say about the proposed changes. And there was a lot of information that we didn't share during the workshop. But primarily, my concern in terms of funding, that what we've been looking at as a city and the way some of the funding has been used, it could definitely be used better and it could be used more, you know, efficiently to ensure that the reason that HAC, one of the reasons it exists, is met. So the affordable housing piece, if the money is spent better, that there will be more affordable housing. So that is one of the goals, and I'm sure during all these discussions that we will have, those conversations about what's been uncovered and how funding has been spent and the goals that we have now. So we know that those are conversations that we'll have. So this isn't sending it to the Planning Commission. There's 100 days in between when it's sent, that there is a comment period. But I also think that it speaks volumes to how the information was presented, what staff thinks about how their words are honored in this process and if they are work at all. So that's just a comment I want to make because it's gonna come up some more. Don Gathers.
Good evening, councilors and everyone. As I too are coming to speak about affordable housing and the HAC, I'll ask those who are here present tonight in support of transparency and how the housing policy is devised to please stand with me. It's imperative that we have a high level of transparency in how these, these policies are devised. We don't, we never need to throw out the baby with the bathwater. And that was what we initially were concerned about when we saw about the possible implosion of the HAC. We might need to change the bathwater, but we certainly don't want to, don't want to just toss everything aside at this point. I stand here as a member of FAR, Public Housing Association of Residents. And I, it's incredible the amount of work that the HAC has done in concert with FAR and with Click and with Chalk and with Impact and with any and everyone in the community that has been devising and pushing for affordable housing. So I urge you, I pray that you will continue to look at that, give it some, some really tough eyes on it. Look at, let's look at the zoning ordinances to possibly allow for property owners to maybe build affordable housing on their own property. Let's look at ADUs as an option. There are many things that we can do to try to tackle this, this situation. Two other things I'd like to speak to, I still stand in concert with the firefighters and especially those who are here tonight. And I wonder what it would look like to the budget if we were to consider adding just three more positions a year for the next three years just to try to get them to the level that they say that they would like to be at. And also an issue that's very near and dear to my heart, these, these parking permits that go up in communities because UVA, their employees and their students come in and take up the parking in, in communities. I find it a complete travesty that people who already pay taxes on their, their homes and on their property are being taxed again to the amount of $25 to pay for a parking permit in order to park in front of their houses that they already pay taxes on. That, that's just backwards to me. There's gotta be a better solution. And the solution shouldn't be to further tax the property owners. Let's look at UVA possibly putting some sort of restrictions or taxes on those individuals. I think that's a much more viable solution to the, to the problem as opposed to, again, putting it back on the, on the community as opposed to looking at doing something with UVA. Thank you.
I just want to comment that last piece because I do, I remember our traffic engineer when this has come up in the past had indicated that by and large, those fees are waived for our residents. But we can have Dr. Richardson follow up on that for the last, for the next meeting.
Yeah, but it's my understanding that if your home has a driveway, those are the individuals who pay the $25. Which, again, I squeeze my head to keep it from exploding. That just makes no sense to me. Because if you have two or three vehicles, well, that, that kills the number of permits that you're given. So if you have visitors to come back, you're stuck.
I'm Greg Wright.
Greg Wright, 203 Red Street. President of the Charlottesville Professional Firefighters. And before we start, I'd like to thank Mr. Don Gathers. And also say that we, with the Charlottesville Professional Firefighters, stand with our brothers and sisters of the police department and their, and their needs as well. I'm deeply concerned about the impact on firefighters and our fire officers in regards to the current staffing allotment and its ultimate impact on our ability to safely deliver the high-quality emergency services our community has come to expect and deserves. Over time, we have added missions based on nothing other than the specific needs of this community. Recently, the resources we have been provided with to carry out these critical missions have not kept pace. As a group, we are generally very reluctant to speak out loudly about our needs, given our understanding that each community gets to decide on the service levels it is willing to pay for. However, this is one of the times I feel an obligation to speak out. Make no mistake, this is a turning point in the history of our department and the city in terms of quantifying through the budget process the relative value of what our firefighters do every day for the most vulnerable in our community. Budgets are indeed a reflection of the community's values and priorities, and I believe the community at large places a high value on public safety. Fire departments are a community's insurance policy against chaos and disaster on both an individual and community-wide level. We're an essential part of the human infrastructure that allows a community to thrive. Nobody likes to pay for insurance, and it's not until after one files a claim that one wishes he or she had purchased a quality policy. Our firefighters proved the value of this historical commitment by multiple councils the weekend of August 12th, 2017, and in the critical role our organization played in preparing our community for the one-year anniversary of the Night the Right rallies. In addition to our highest-profile responses, the men and women of CFD prove their worth each and every day as they continue to provide the highest level of service in a limited staffing environment. As we follow the news about a possible pandemic, we are well aware that the community as a whole will be leaning heavily on the well-trained firefighters of CFD. As we speak, there are 25 firefighters in Washington State sitting in quarantine for exposure to the coronavirus. FEMA is preparing for an emergency declaration, and we're trying in vain to ensure that our community has a sufficient number of firefighters. The continued conversation about rightsizing or reallocating personnel and equipment is literally the most dangerous option that exists. Shutting down or browning out fire engines and thereby sending fewer firefighters to a house fire or other emergency is dangerous for our community, moves us further away from industry standards, and increases risk for firefighters. We are not in an economic downturn, and the fiscal health of the city is excellent. This is ultimately about how our community decides to set its priorities. And I for one believe that most of our community, most in our community understand the need for a well-supported fire department. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we are having those conversations, just say it again. And we're trying to figure out how our regional neighbors pay their fair share that they haven't been doing for years. And Dr. Richardson is going to be having those conversations to make sure that the stress on the agency isn't caused by, you know, the work we're doing outside of city limits. And, and that also that UVA is contributing what it should. So we have been having the conversations about how to not end up in this space and how not to have you all stressed to capacity. And, and so it's happening. So just say that again. Dan Rosenzweig.
I'm patient as I made it out of, I'm Dan Rosenzweig. I live at 740 Lexington Avenue. And I, so serve at your pleasure on the Housing Advisory Committee. First, the good. I'm grateful to city staff, in particular Lisa Robertson, Brian Haluska, and John Sales for bringing forward two proposals, collectively Division Two, where the incentive zoning provisions and the proposed zoning text amendment. I believe that both of these proposed sections should go forward to both the Planning Commission and the HAC for review, public hearings, and a recommendation. Along with that, I am deeply concerned about a number of proposals in the remainder of the recommended ordinance. My professional opinion is that much of it would devastate our collective ability to provide affordable housing targeted at people who need it the most. In three minutes, I don't have time for a deep dive, excuse me, on all the specifics, but here are a couple of examples of things in Division One that aren't ready to move forward, even as part of a ETA study initiation. Under the Ordinance's Purpose Section, paragraph D2, Roman numeral one, delegates without limits council's own duties to establish regulations to an unelected, unappointed program administrator. There are certainly a host of powers that you ought to delegate so that city staff can perform their duties efficiently, but this is too broad. Section D, Roman numeral four, would establish sale and rent prices as the barometers of affordability rather than the income of the end user. Quite frankly, the state-enabling legislation for this was written by the Home Builders Association, and it has not worked. It's been counterproductive and borderline scandalous. Like in Albemarle County, this language would allow a developer to proffer affordable units defined by a price that's set by this commission. In the county, it's $243,000, or a price that doesn't preclude the developer from recouping costs, which comes straight out of the state code, which is accessible only to people at about 76% to 80% of area median income who are creditworthy. After 90 days, those units then revert to market rate sales. In other words, it's a fake affordable housing policy. It's the county's primary housing policy. There are other issues, but I'll stop there. Instead, I'll offer that this kind of complex policy work is best vetted via public process, making use of the range of expertise and experience we are blessed with in the community. And by that, I don't just mean the local housing providers, but rather the people who live in our communities, the true experts about their neighborhood, their dreams, their hopes, and their abilities. So in brief, my ask is three things. Send the proposals under Division Two, incentive zoning provisions, to the HAC and to the PC for study and a recommendation. Table the remainder of the, of the proposed ETA. And finally, let's end the power struggle tonight. Let's all commit to acting in good faith to work together focused on the only thing that really should matter to us. And that's the well-being of members of the Charlottesville low wealth community who have been systematically denied the basic human right of simple, decent, affordable housing. Let's work together.
David Curtis.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Officer Curtis. I'm a patrol officer with the Charlottesville Police Department. I've served this community for approximately four years. I'm currently a SWAT operator and a field training officer. I was hired back in 2015. I was ecstatic about the opportunity to serve this prestigious community. Because of the Charlottesville reputation, I also knew the application field was vast, and getting an offer was difficult. I felt honored when I was hired here. Ultimately, that reputation was, once drew me to this department, no longer remains. Applications have fallen dramatically, drastically, and recently, our numbers have reached critical levels. Since 2017, we have lost approximately 60 officers. It's important to remember that these officers I speak of are also people. Their fathers, mothers, sons, daughters, husbands, wives. I believe sometimes this is forgotten, but not only in the city, but society as a whole. These are the men and women who are in the public, representing the city of Charlottesville on a daily basis. They do their best to provide for the city day in and day out. These officers truly care about the community, as you can see behind me, that this is why they are all here tonight on their time off. Not long ago, the department witnessed our staffing levels reach critical levels, levels which this department has never seen before. As previously stated before, a headline once read, "Charlottesville Sees Mass Exodus." This made it difficult to do anything beyond answering calls for 911, and will always remain our priority. This community deserves a better police response when they need it. They don't deserve to wait for when their emergency to be shelved until officers are available. Much too often, that's exactly what happens when our staffing is at minimum. These officers want to provide the best service possible. We can only do it with, but we can't do it with skeleton staffing. Additionally, when the staffing is low, it leads to the inability to follow officers to use their vacation time. Time away from work, often spent with families, is a prestigious commodity. Even after lowering the shift minimum, it is far too common for our officers to be denied the time off that they have earned. The last point I would like to make is our fleet. Put it simply, our current fleet vehicles are failing the department and the community. Some vehicles have over 140,000 miles on them. Some of these vehicles, you have to hit the dashboard several times in order to read the odometer. We portray Charlottesville as a world-class city, and we're driving vehicles that are anything but world-class. While many departments around us are offering take-home vehicles to their officers, we barely have enough to shuffle between shifts. The officers in this department deserve vehicles that are reliable and a representation of the image that we are trying to portray. They serve as our officers, and they are the first thing that a citizen in need sees upon our arrival. The city deserves better, and we deserve better. You all know me. The majority of you know me very well. I've sat back there for three years, very quietly, sometimes. And I can no longer be silent. The city needs to be supportive, supported by the police. The police also needs the city's support. Appreciate your time, and we will leave, I'll leave with this one last thought as we move forward. I would ask that you not consider the cost of fixing these issues, but instead, I would ask you to consider the cost to the city if the seats behind me were not filled. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Grant Davis.
Members of council and Mayor Walker, my name is Officer Davis. I've been an officer with Charlottesville for over six years. I'm currently assigned to the Patrol Division as well, but I also serve as an operator on the SWAT team and as a field training officer. The officers that have come here tonight in support of this feel like it shouldn't be our job to bring these concerns to light. But it's come too far for us to just not come in here and talk about it. Our position is that better officer compensation and retention are concerns that need to be addressed by this council. When the city loses experienced officers to surrounding agencies, this community is less, less safe. I want to repeat that. When we lose good officers, we're less safe. The city has lost multiple experienced officers to department just outside our city limits. When this happens, the department and the community have to wait for new officers to get hired, get trained, gain experience. It costs approximately $50,000 to send one recruit through the academy and equip them for full duty, which means the city loses experienced officers, hires new ones, and the city is wasting money. During this expensive process, the city has left depleted of resources and less experience. These experienced officers not only have stronger relationships with the citizens and are better equipped to handle many of the calls for service that we go to. CPD used to be the department that all others in the region compared themselves to, but that's no longer the case. The city needs a department that has strong incentives to come here and work and to stay here for the length of your career. The chief reasons for officers leaving CPD has been lack of a pay scale and lack of a robust take-home car program as compared to agencies in our immediate area. Officers want to know what their future will be like financially, and a pay scale would give them that peace of mind. More officers who want to stay here longer and call Charlottesville home makes for a safer community for everybody. We're asking you to invest in the officer's future in the following areas. One, a competitive pay compared to other jurisdictions. Two, a pay scale in place. Three, a take-home car program. And four, improved facilities as the other officer touched on. Help us do this to retain officers and create a great police department. And as Officer Curtis said, we don't ever want to see another headline that says mass exodus. That's just not good. We've already done two pay studies. Any one of us here can tell you that we're being paid inadequately. Any one of the officers that has left CPD can tell you that. Most of us don't make enough money to even live in the city that we believe is or anywhere near it in a lot of cases. We only have approximately 10 sworn personnel living within the city limits. In future hearings, please remember this point more than any other. This community is less safe when the city loses good. This community is less safe when the city loses good experienced officers. Incentivize officers to stay here. Please invest in us so we can continue to invest in this city. Thank you.
Katrina Turner.
Katrina Turner. I'm speaking for the CR, I mean for the People's Coalition about the budget for the CRB and the Adult DMC. We demand and expect that Charlottesville will align its policies, goals, and budget to further race equity values and actively redress our community inheritance of race discrimination resulting inequities, intentional and unintentional, which continue to this day. For the CRB, we are asking for 1% of the Police Department budget, $180,000 to $200,000, and two fully funded positions. We would also like to know how much will be set aside for the work on the Adult DMC in the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Saccadato. Can you pronounce this so I can know in the future?
Saccadato.
Saccadato.
It's common spelling. Good evening. My name is Andy Saccadato, and I have been in the fire service for the past fourteen years of my life. Nine of those fourteen have been as a firefighter with the city of Charlottesville. I love my job, and I can assure you that there is nothing else I would rather do in this world and no other community I would rather serve. As a fireman, I swore an oath to protect life and property. When I swore that oath to Chief Charles Warner, I knew that keeping my promise to the citizens of this great city could potentially cost me my life. I can assure you, right here and right now, that I would absolutely lay down my life for the city, its citizens, and my brother and sister firefighters, and my brothers in blue. I'd gladly do it. It's my job. You can ask any one of the firefighters and the police officers in this room right now this very question, and they would all give you the same answer I just gave you. Each of us, every morning we come to work, know that the possibility exists that we might not come home. We tuck this fact in the back, this fact in the back of our minds as we kiss our loved ones goodbye. It's a fact of our profession that every single one of us understands and accepts in order to do the job that we so dearly love. You might be sitting here right now saying to yourself, "All of you knew this risk when you joined the fire department or the police department." You're right. All of us knew the risk, accepted the risk, and will take the risk for the citizens of Charlottesville. None of us will dispute that. What I wish council to consider is the fact that if council and the city denies the request for additional staffing made by the Charlottesville Fire Department, the Charlottesville Professional Firefighters Association, and several members of the community, you are increasing the probability that one of us will not get to go home at the end of our shift. In order to fulfill all the missions that the fire department is tasked with, we need these additional staffing positions, plain and simple. Let me be clear that we, as firefighters, will still continue to take the risk to protect life and property regardless of your decision. However, if you choose not to staff the department in accordance with national industry standards, the probability of tragedy occurring increases exponentially. But let's take the firefighters out of this for a moment. All of us, whether city employees or elected officials, took an oath to serve the citizens of the city. The citizens are ultimately the ones who will suffer if these positions are not approved. Whether this means an insufficient number of firefighters arrive on the scene to carry out critical tasks when someone's house is on fire, or there is no ambulance available to provide lifesaving care during a life-threatening medical emergency, the bottom line is that the decision to deny these positions is a hefty gamble. In my experience, gambling always has a way of coming back to bite you. Whether the city is choosing to gamble firefighters' lives or citizens' lives, the result will ultimately end in tragedy. I ask council to take a moment when considering this budget and ask themselves, "What's a firefighter's life worth? What's a police officer's life worth? What's a citizen's life's worth?" The currency that we are gambling with when fire department staffing levels are below national industry standards. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Staffing Matters. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Marty Bass.
Before my three minutes begins, I hope I could ask a question of city council, and that is, I'm here to talk about the Barracks Emmett Intersection Project and wondered if that has been presented to you yet or whether that's supposed to happen tonight.
It's tonight, but it's not a public hearing.
But it's going to be voted on.
Correct.
First of two readings.
Yeah, so you can...
I think it's one rea, I was told, I called and I was told it was one reading and it's going to be voted on, but you haven't heard about it yet.
Yes, we came to a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission, three of us did.
Okay.
And then we have these materials.
Well, my three minutes is starting now. I'm here to point out some flaws that I see in the project. So I've put those, you have what I'm going to read, and I've put some pictures on the back of suggestions that I have for changes in the plan. So if you're familiar with the plan, it is going to be a multi-use path that's quite wide, I think twelve to fifteen feet, plus a grass buffer between that and the highway, which then takes considerable property from landowners going down Barracks Road. Also, it ends up being a path that bikers going down the hill will also be going with pedestrian traffic. And by the way, bikers going up the hill walk their bikes generally going up Barracks Road Hill. So we're really against the multi-use path and would rather see not such a wide sidewalk, but rather have the bikes that are going down the hill to be on the other side of the street, the north side of the street. And I have demonstrated on the back of this, this is the present north side of the bigger picture, is the present north side of Barracks Road, and you can see there's a ditch there. And there is to be no mitigation of the north side of the street at all in their plan, whereas I took a picture, if you look at this picture, over on Cherry Avenue where there could be a curb put on the north side of the street so bike traffic could still go down the path on the right-hand side of the road going down the hill. Some other things that I pointed out, I was going to read this, but my three minutes is not going to allow that, that a lot of the perennial issues on Barracks Road are not even addressed in this eight million dollar plan, such as speed, safe pedestrian crossings, there's no way to cross from one side of the street to the other, safe entrance and exit on Barracks Road from Hilltop and Buckingham Roads, you take your life in your hands getting out of those roads and turning into them. Third, everyone that travels down this road knows that when you, everybody wants to go right when they get to the bottom of the hill, so the traffic backs up almost to Hilltop often because the people that are going right can't allow any of the other cars to go down because the road's too narrow. They haven't addressed that issue between Hessian and Metabook Roads. And finally, it's almost lefthable that we're allowing the project to take considerable property from the front yards of the attractive south side of the road and not even addressing the ugly and perhaps unstable erosion on the north side of the road. So please, I see this as kind of a boondoggle, a wasteful and impractical project that came about probably because they got smart-scale funding of eight million dollars and then have to do something with it. So please, I think we deserve better. I hope you'll have a look at it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Reverend Goanna, I've called Ms. Bass out of turn, but it was you, so I apologize for that.
Good evening to everyone. Want to take consideration of the history of Washington Park. I am the president of the Rose Hill Neighborhood Association, and the concern is if we, if you would consider naming the poolhouse Elizabeth Harrison. Elizabeth Harrison, also known, from the community, as Ms. Snooki. She was there from the 50s to the 70s. She was a supervisor at the waiting pool, and when the pool was redeveloped, she was a cashier. She was a cornerstone of the pool in Washington Park. And so we would like to keep the history alive by naming the poolhouse Elizabeth Harrison Pool House.
Thank you. You got that? So we can just find out about process that we'll take next time. Tom Gallagher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tom Gallagher. I live at 1920 Barracks Road. So the essential point I would like to bring up is that I think the proposed mixed-use path, mixed-use path on Barracks Road is unnecessarily broad, which will lead to probably the removal of more trees than are really necessary. So just to remind you that the latest version I've seen of this proposal is a three-foot mixed-use path between the roadway and, sorry, a three-foot buffer between the roadway and path, and the path is 10 feet wide. So the three feet, you could, anybody who walks up and down Barracks Road understands immediately that three feet is reasonable. The 10-foot wide mixed-use path is clearly something that would be right for a fairly heavy traffic. The traffic up, the pedestrian and bicycle traffic up and down Barracks Road is anything but heavy. When they made the survey last summer, it's one cyclist per day. Okay? And so, and tens of pedestrians. Now, with this proposed improvement, you might have a few more pedestrians, but you are not going to have any more cyclists because the slope of the road is 10% in places. It's just too hard to climb. People won't do it. If they don't do it now, they won't do it then. So my, and further perhaps reducing the number of cyclists is the fact that now the Barracks Road Emmett Street now has two more traffic lanes. They've been more forbidding to cyclists. So as you probably also realize, there's a new CVS at the bottom, and they've put a sidewalk in there that presumably, or pathway, that will connect to this mixed-use path. It's eight feet wide. I can see no reason why that path should be then widened to 10 feet as you go up the hill, where if you're on a bicycle, you will be clearly going at a crawl. So I think making, continuing the path at something like eight feet would be more than adequate and would save a whole lot of trees. Okay? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Charles Kendrick. Good evening.
Thank you for your service to our community. I live at 593 Rose Montroite in Charlottesville, and I'm here this evening to really talk about the role of the city manager. Our current city manager was appointed in May of 2019, Dr. Richardson, and I've been trying to find out, with respect, what Dr. Richardson is responsible for. What standards of performance have been established for the city manager and his or her direct reports? I submitted a FOIA request, trying to find out what those requirements were, what those objectives were. I've not been able to find anything. I've been not able to find anything about associated improvement goals, and I've listened here to many speaking prior to my opportunity about what the needs of their particular organizations are, especially the police and fire organizations. When will it happen that we hold people accountable for key positions that run the city? A raise was to be given to our city manager, and I read a little bit about the delay, toward the end of 2019, a short period of time after he joined the city. I'd like to know what was accomplished during that time to warrant such compensation adjustment. What has been accomplished during that time? In my business experience, I learned very early on, what gets measured gets done. Twenty years ago, job descriptions and salary study work occurred in our city. Nothing has happened. It's not necessarily Dr. Richardson's fault, but for 20 years, for two decades, we have not provided the kind of information we need to pay our people promptly, properly. We're ready to spend, I believe still, a million, a million-five for a study, yet we could go down the road to Albemarle County, perhaps, and see what they do, to see what other best practices are in central Virginia that maybe we could learn from and save money to be used elsewhere. Budget surplus. We always seem to come up with a budget surplus at the end of the year. I can't understand that. I can't understand that when we have the kinds of needs that people have been talking about tonight. Who manages the money? Who holds people accountable for the money that they ask for to make sure it's spent judiciously? I believe that the CEO, the city manager, is the person who runs this city, is the man that we need to go to that has bottom-line accountability for the kinds of things that I'm talking about and for what the people talked about earlier. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And just a few, we had a six-month evaluation, and with the previous council, we will have another evaluation that will be due in June, and it'll run from July 1st to June 30th every year. Dr. Richardson didn't receive an increase, so the salary that he was hired on to $2,005, $205,000, yeah, that one, he is still at, so there wasn't an adjustment at the evaluation And we have been talking about a solution and measurement group, even looking citywide at how to analyze the dollars that the city is spending and make sure that the money is spent efficiently. It's just something even in the two years that Councilor Hill and I have been, that we've been talking about, but we haven't been able to put a system in place, but it is a top priority to make sure that it's in place. And the compensation study, I've made some comments about how I feel about the 1.2 million, but again, it is something that I know other council members feel strongly. We all feel strongly about making sure that our staff members are paid well, how to arrive at what that looks like, but we are invested in making sure that we don't arrive at this place again where individuals have not been receiving raises or haven't been adequately paid. And I think that may have answered.
I would just say that when we go through the whole strategic planning process this year, one of the main goals of that is to make sure that we have measures in place to hold us to, where I think that's where we've been currently lacking historically is not having measurements to show progress, so.
And it's very important, and we understand, and in almost every area that we look at, we can see where it's been problematic, and we've been trying to come up with solutions to fix that.
And I would just add that there also, I mean, obviously, there's a difference between measurements that the council looks at for an employee, but there are specific duties set out in the city code in Chapter Two for the city manager, as well as Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1541 also set out the legal duties for the city manager.
Are they measurable, sir?
And they are measurable to a degree.
All right. All right, so that was the end of our Community Matters. We will break for 15 minutes, so we'll come back at 8:00. Thank you.